The Board of Commissioners of the Greater Boca Raton Beach and Park District is now called to order. It is Monday, May 3, 2021. The time is 5:15 PM. Joanne, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Ernst?
Here.
Commissioner Engel?
Here.
Commissioner Rollins?
Here.
Commissioner Vogelstein?
Here.
And Commissioner Wright?
Here.
Commissioners, are there changes to the agenda? Mr. Rollins? Changes to the agenda?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
I think you need to unmute yourself, Bob. I can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
Technical difficulties. We'll be right with you.
Or we don't make a change to the agenda.
Okay. How's that?
Perfect.
We got you.
Madam Chair, would you like me to make a change to the agenda?
I heard that you would like to make a change to the agenda?
Yes, I would. I'd like to move item number one to the last position on the agenda since that may be an extended conversation and like to get the other business out of the way earlier, please.
Is that all right with the other commissioners?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Engel?
Yeah. If we could, I'd also like to move public discussion on that agenda item to the end of the meeting so that it's separate from everything else.
Just on that agenda item?
Just on that one.
We can reopen public requests after that for the RFI as well.
In that spirit, Madam Chair, is it possible to move payroll and invoices up so we don't forget about them? Because I know our staff likes to get paid.
Well, why don't we do that right after we do the approval of the minutes? Is that all right with everybody?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. So getting that out of the way, let's do public requests and then we will reopen public requests after we discuss the RFI so that the public can weigh in. Brienne, do you have, or Melissa, do you have any hands up?
Yes. Bruce Diliver Standing?
Hi. Bruce Diliver Standing, 140 Southeast Fifth Avenue, Boca Raton, Florida, 33432. So I guess I'll save my comments for Ocean Breeze for later on. But I gotta say, I sent you guys an email and was spoken with a commissioner. I am so against you transferring property to the city in your hands. I think you guys can take care of it. I'd like to just say that with the documents that I put together at the joint meeting that should more money be needed for the pumping stations, that you guys are not committed to any more money according to the 1984 agreement, only what you have in your budget. And I think that FAU needs to figure out how to cough up some money. And as far as ocean strand goes, I'd like to suggest that the ocean side be dedicated for people that are fishing because I see many times guys are fishing and sometimes lifeguards chase them away. So since that's not a swimming area, maybe that can become just a dedicated fishing area. And just one thing I gotta say, I'm sure you'll hear from Keith Golf in Boca Tika. The city, if you're gonna build another golf course, I would highly suggest not to build another executive course, but rather improve the executive course you have at Red Reef. I mean, to have holes that are on the water, on the ocean, and both on the intracoastal, it's just magnificent. I mean, I walk there, that's part of my exercise program, and it's like the most beautiful prime property. So if anything, I'm just gonna suggest just throw some more money and upgrade that. You'll probably upgrade the players, et cetera. And that's what I have to say at the moment, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Verstandig. Melissa, do you have some more?
Yes. Sorry. Mr. Foster?
Yes, Melissa?
Yes, please just give your name and your address, please, in your hot five minutes.
All right, thank you. Carl Foster, 131 South Federal Highway in Boca Raton, Florida, 33432. I've been a resident for, since 1983 in Boca Raton. I have an events company and also a broadcast company. I do Inside World Pickleball and CBS Sports each week and also have been very involved in the Delray Beach pickleball tournament that recently we partnered with the APP Tour. We're very excited about the pickleball expansion in Boca, playing over at El Rio when that first opened up with Raul, and also now at Patch Reef Park since you've expanded the six courts there, done a beautiful job. And the pickleball community has been responding very favorably, and we're excited. We represent the APP Tour, which is the largest USA pickleball sanctioned tour in the country with 22 events, including the Delray Beach event that was sold out with 900 players. And if, I know some of you may have attended that event over at Delray Beach Tennis Stadium, where I've been involved with that tennis tournament for the last 25 years, is the official voice of the tournament. So if you've ever been over there, you may have seen me or heard me in the tennis community. But we've got excited about pickleball the last year and a half and like to thank you guys in Boca for what you're doing, living here and playing here tennis, golf, and now pickleball. It's been very exciting to see the growth of the Parks and Rec and also playing with Melissa over there in Patch Reef Park. So we've been discussing some opportunities and we'd like to put a request in for the May 17 event to put in a formal proposal to hold an APP Tour event at Patch Reef Park and bring the local community in as well as some economic impact. We just received our study from the Delray Beach Palm Beach Sports Commission on the impact that we brought to the city of Delray Beach at our event there, a five-day event, and also keeping the tennis courts there for the tennis community as well as enjoying pickleball for a five-day tournament coming up in 2022. So we'd like to bring Boca, you know, our hometown and our backyard into the forefront of the worldwide national pickleball exposure with our CBS Sports coverage as well as live streaming and bringing a lot of excitement to the city of Boca. And so that's what we'd like to do, being very involved in the sports community here. We also do a lot of fundraising events, charity events. We just did the first responders in Delray and raised $15,000 for our first responders with the Pickleball Pro Celebrity Event. That was a lot of fun, a first-time venture for us to tie pickleball into the charity aspect. So we'd like to also bring that into the Boca scenario. And I know there's talk about several areas in Boca about expansion of pickleball courts, and we'd also like to discuss some opportunities there about maybe moving our APP World Headquarters from Chicago down to Boca. So that's some of our vision and our excitement. Ken Herman from the APP Tour, used to be the tennis pro over at Buffalo Club in Boca with Gene Mills for many years, and was part of the USTA Player Development Program in tennis before he started the APP Tour a little over a year and a half ago. So he's got a Boca background. He'd like to bring his family back down to Boca, and I've talked him into, he's been down here for Delray and Boca and talked him into if we can work something out, maybe we'll move the headquarters right to Boca. So we're excited about some of those opportunities that you guys have on your planning schedules, and we'd like to be a part of that. So if we could request a opportunity to make a more formal presentation at May 17. We are working on our 2022 schedule now that will be announced in the middle of June. So there is a little bit of urgency in order to get Boca on the calendar. We have 22 events scheduled for next year, including Delray, and we have one in Port St. Lucie, but PJ Verano is also part of the APP Tour in Punta Gorda. So we have three stops in Florida. We'd love to add Boca Raton to that calendar for next year. So that's my request. I appreciate your time and thanks, Melissa and Raul, and all the work you're doing with Parks and Rec. And we've talked to Barbara and some of the people over at Patch Reef, and they all seem very excited about some of the opportunities.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. When we get to future agenda items, we'll discuss that at that time, but thank you for calling in and for all the great information. Melissa?
We have the phone number ending in 3460. Please state your name and address in about five minutes.
Hi, everybody. It's Rick Hurd, 285 Northeast Spanish Court. And I'm a little confused. I'm not, I have comments that I'd like to make before you discuss the RFI, and I might have them after, too. Should I make them now or should I wait?
You can make them now, Rick. You're always welcome to weigh in.
Okay, thanks. So here we go. So I'm speaking to you as a golf industry expert, not from the position of someone who has a stake in this decision. Just when we need really good information, decisions are now being made based on an outdated and inaccurate needs assessment that does not reflect the status of recreation in golf in 2021. From last week at the joint meeting, council members said things like, there's golf everywhere. In fact, there's full-size public golf nowhere in Boca. They also said the demand for a golf course is coming only from Boca Tika residents. That is false. The demand for golf is coming from golfers who are playing at Boca Municipal and elsewhere. They also said golf is not that big of a need. I think the needs assessment demonstrated that. Well, since that assessment was taken in June of 2019, that's when the final input was taken, June of 2019, the world of recreation and, most importantly, golf has undergone a sea change. There are now 11 million rounds per month increase over 2019. There's a 35% increase in rounds played in municipal golf. There are 500,000 more golfers now than there were in 2019, and our local golf services, and I'm speaking from our own perspective at Osprey Point, are up 50% versus 2019 at full capacity. When Boca Municipal closes, we will be losing 25,000 rounds of golf per year. That's a 30% decrease in rounds played while demand simultaneously is going up 50%. And we talk about rounds played, and it's sort of not personal, but rounds are people. These are people who are recreating. Where will these people go? They're not gonna go to Osprey Point. It's at full capacity. They're not gonna go to Boca Country Club. It's too difficult, and it will not have the capacity for the executive golfers. Those executive golfers are not gonna go to Red Reef Park. Beautiful course. I agree with Mr. Diliver Standing. It's awesome place, but it's too short and it doesn't have the capacity because it's already doing even more rounds than that. They're not gonna go to South Winds. It doesn't have the capacity. And they're not gonna go to private clubs. So where are they gonna go? And I'm telling you from my perspective as an industry expert, that the demand is there for a well-designed executive golf course and a full-size practice range learning center will not be satisfied by Boca Country Club. It will not compete with Boca Country Club, but will complement it by offering a golf experience that does not and will never exist at Boca Country Club. In response to your RFI, I outlined two scenarios that will accomplish everything highlighted in the needs assessment: walking paths, gardens, cycling, picnic areas, indoor activities, playgrounds, a dog park, and a world-class pickleball center. My plan also solves the need for golf that was missed in that assessment. You own the east property and you can build the golf park there. That was not my number-one scenario. That's not the best design, but it's a good one. It was my number-two scenario, and it could be a fantastic golf park for you. The city manager wants to study until the end of summer to see if Boca Country Club could accommodate pickleball. Well, it doesn't take till the end of summer. All you have to do is look at the map. The Boca Country Club tennis facility is two and a half acres, which includes parking. The East Naples Pickleball Center is nine acres, and Pictona in Holly Hill, Florida, is about the same. The decision is easy to make. Pickleball needs to be at Ocean Breeze, and it needs to be big. It's always easy, especially with political groups, to study things for another six months. We've been studying this for three years. The west side will satisfy the other needs of the needs assessment, including pickleball. The east side can satisfy golf. You need to push forward. You need to agree as a commission on a bold, high-level vision for this space and move forward. It's the only way we can go. So I'm calling you to action. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
33481. You now have the floor and have five minutes. Please state your name and address.
Hey, folks. It's Earl Starkoff, 3260 St. Charles Way, Boca Raton. I have a view of the needs assessment, and I'm not gonna get into the weeds of it, but I was interested in what the presenter, the author presented of the needs assessment. And it occurs to me, and this is coming up into your current budget year, I think that you and the city have to allow for the update, probably for two years of budgeting. The reason I say that is, first of all, the author showed that it was about a 31% of, if I remember correctly, gap that was based on lack of knowledge of facilities available. And I think that staff should start meeting with Michael and his staff and start looking forward to a communications plan. Frankly, it's operations that belong in the city, but I think that you should be planning for starting the website, starting the communications plan. You folks took a look at it a couple of years ago and decided not to proceed, and that's fine. But I think that will close some of that gap, and it's hard to tell what your needs are until people are informed in terms of what's already available. And by the time a website is designed and launched and you have enough data to make a decision, to even start thinking about a master plan, it will take the next two budget cycles, although you might be able to have some information and start the master plan in the second budget cycle from now going into the third budget cycle. The other reason I think that you need to allow two years for updating is that hopefully we're seeing the post-COVID environment on the near horizon, but we're not there yet. And until we're really into the post, the real reality, not the reality that we've been into now, but the real reality of the post-COVID environment, we're not gonna know what the recreation scene is looking like. There's also, there's a lot of predictions, but it's crystal ball casing. So I think that you should allow time as well. It's gonna take a year at least into the post-COVID environment, the new environment, until there's gonna be any discernible patterns that can dictate what's going on or what is needed for a master plan, because there's a lot in the master plan that hasn't accounted for new programs that could develop over the next year or two. The other thing is that there's a great uneasiness in terms of what's gonna happen to commercial space, real estate space, as people return to work. Will they return to work full force? Will they return to work as a hybrid? All of this is unknown. And this also might present opportunities for the district or the city or both to acquire the hard space that may come out of the needs assessment for the types of community centers and other meeting places at a better rate than trying to build it fresh. So that's the sum and substance of it. Please start planning for a two-year extension of the current part of the process so that you can update the needs assessment and then have some realistic information going forward into a master plan. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Starkoff.
Mr. Galanis, please state your name and address, and you have five minutes, sir.
Yes, good afternoon. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, Greg. Thank you.
Greg Galanis, 1780 Parkside Circle South, Boca Raton. And before I get started, I just wanna make sure I recognize and congratulate Suzie Vogelstein for Hole-in-One this weekend.
Thank you, Greg.
It was good to hear my friend Rick Hurd speak and know that he and I have not spoken in the last couple of weeks, but much of what we have to say today is in lockstep. While we appreciate the time and hard work all of you have provided over the last three-plus years, we all know what matters most is getting things done. I'm here today to encourage and urge you guys to forget the past. How we got here is irrelevant. It's time to come to a consensus among the Beach and Park Commission and commit to and execute on a plan. The city will never take you seriously and consider your request unless you guys agree among yourselves. Listen to your constituents. Do the right thing for the right reason. Put a detailed plan together and show the city what you hope to do to bring value to our community. Rick went to great lengths to put together a plan, which was very well thought out, and I think he sent you guys a YouTube video, which includes all of your priority items. These are community members spending lots and lots of time to give you guys input. It is, at the same time, imminently apparent that the city publicly no longer supports anything golf-related at Boca Tika, which is very interesting, for no apparent reason other than the fact that a golf course was given to them, and they think they've filled the need for our great city. What they fail to see is the following: demand for public access golf is huge and growing rapidly. Rick quoted some of these statistics. When I'm finished speaking, I will send you more accurate statistics that show even greater growth than what Rick spoke to. The fastest and most profitable segment of the market is quality short courses and practice facilities. As a great Florida destination city, Boca Raton needs a quality public access golf course. At the end of August, there will only be one within the city limits, and it is Red Reef Pitchin' Pot. The gentleman that spoke earlier was absolutely correct. It's a stunning setting and an unbelievable environment on the beach, but it is at capacity today. There's no parking, there's no golf courses, very, very limited what you can do, and at the end of the day, it's a pitch and putt putt course. The updated numbers for Boca Muni on the executive course are approaching 30,000 rounds annually. And to Rick's earlier point, those are 30,000 residents playing a round of golf on that executive course that disappears without a replacement come the end of September. The city councilwoman who made the comment at the joint meeting that there are dozens of golf courses in the area, you know, why do we need to invest, was completely ignorant with her comments. There are at least a dozen within a 10-square-mile radius that cost anywhere between $8,700 a year and $50,000 a year, most of which have their membership capped because they have no capacity to put people. In closing, it's interesting and funny that the city's landing page on their website highlights just a handful of things: beaches, waterways, recreation, and yes, golf. Thank you for listening, and again, I encourage you guys to come to some consensus, move forward together, and be crystal clear what you're telling the city you want them to support. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Greg.
Individual recognized as iPad. Please state your name, give your address, and you'll have five minutes.
This is Harold Chaffey, 5200 Northwest Second Avenue. I'm the president of Cape Cod from Boca. I'm a little upset that you take the people from Boca Tika and you discredit us. Every, I mean, the city and yourselves, basically, always those people from Boca Tika again. You realize we're the ones five years ago who started this movement not to increase our value of our homes. It was because the city decided to sell the golf course, and there was no other place to play golf. The only place to build a golf course was Ocean Breeze. Unfortunately, we are blamed now for being the greedy people that wanted here, when you people also ignoring the people and golfers in the city. You took away, you just discredited. I can't believe that Andrew O'Rourke would make a comment of those people from Boca Tika who hoped they would get their golf course again. We're not fighting this for us. We're fighting this for the golfers because you're shortchanging them. You're taking away 350 rounds of golf that was played at Ocean Breeze here and another probably 350 out, and what are you giving back? An 18-hole course that's not even in the city? You can even see that the needs assessment didn't even bring in the circle for that golf course. Do you know why? Because you don't have a golf course here. The object was basically to have a golf course in the city that would revitalize the area, bring costs down so the people, the golfers in the city, could enjoy themselves. You took that away, and now you even took away everything else. What do you want, pickleball? Or what about cornhole? There's another sport. Why don't we just keep on jumping up and reacting to pre-actional sports that are here today and gone tomorrow? You know, the golf was brought, like I said, and I think I've overdone, but I'm just really furious that you discredited us here. Just unbelievable. You took away everything that we could even possibly have here. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chaffey.
I don't see any more hands raised.
Brienne, do we have any emails?
I only had one from Mr. Hurd, but he spoke, so it was a backup.
Okay. All right. We're going to suspend public requests until after we discuss the Ocean Breeze RFI. So it's now time for the approval of the minutes of the board meeting, the hybrid board meeting, April 16, 2021. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. A second, please.
Second.
I think Mr. Rollins seconded, but he was on mute. Is there any discussion? Anybody have any comments? Hearing none. Joanne, would you do a roll call vote for the approval of the minutes of the board meeting of April 16, 2021?
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogelstein?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Joanne. On page 26, since we did make a change to the agenda, we have the approval of payroll and invoices, and I would like a motion from Mr. Ernst.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for approval of payroll and invoices for the amount of $32,747.45. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none. I'm getting an echo, so would you all mute when, Joanne, would you do a roll call vote?
Sure. Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogelstein?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Joanne. On page 26, since we did make a change to the agenda, we have the approval of payroll and invoices, and I would like a motion from Mr. Ernst.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for approval of payroll and invoices for the amount of $32,747.45. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Hearing none. I'm getting an echo, so would you all mute when, Joanne, would you do a roll call vote?
Sure. Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogelstein?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The Verde K-8 agreement. Brienne?
Commissioners, on page 13 in your agenda packets is the start of the facility agreement between the school board and the Greater Boca Raton Beach and Park District, highlighting how the facility will be used by the incoming middle school program, which is the Cambridge Academy, that will be happening at Verde K-8 this, the begin next school year. They would have access to our facilities to start intramural programs for their after-school.
Brienne, would you bring that up for us?
Commissioners, on page eight in your agenda packets is the renewal for Merv Timberlake, who's been serving.
Did I say Griffin?
I don't know. I don't know, but Merv has been, Merv will forgive you. Merv has been very helpful, obviously, he's been an asset really to the district. This is to extend his current contract by two years. It's the same amount that we're currently paying. So other than changing it for two, additional two years, there's no other changes to this. So I'm looking for approval tonight of this agreement.
Commissioners, do you have any comments or questions? Okay. I'd like to have a motion to approve Mr. Timberlake's renewal agreement, please.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Joanne, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogelstein?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The Verde K-8 agreement, Brienne?
Commissioners, on page 13 in your agenda packets is the start of the facility agreement between the school board and the Greater Boca Raton Beach and Park District, highlighting how the facility will be used by the incoming middle school program, which is the Cambridge Academy, that will be happening at Verde K-8 this, begin next school year. They would have access to our facilities to, to start intramural programs for their after-school students. In middle school only, it won't be for the entire, it'll just be for sixth, seventh, and eighth graders in the program. They'll have a chance to do swimming or tennis. And then, of course, they're going to have cross-country, but that doesn't impact our facility. But those will be the three sports that they offer for their students. So this agreement highlights what those terms will be. City staff has, has signed off on all this as well, and the school board is, is comfortable with it moving forward. So I'm open to answer any questions and then hopefully seek approval of this agreement tonight as well.
Okay, I, I hope that everybody was understanding that the board means the school board, not our district board in the language of this agreement. I do have one question about who is going to supervise the students if they have to go into the building or leave the, either the pool or the tennis courts?
The, the students are completely supervised by the staff, from the school board, not from the city staff. Whoever the, the instructors and trainers are that are assigned to the swim team or assigned to the tennis, they will be responsible for checking those kids in and checking them out and ensuring that they follow all the safety guidelines within the facility as well.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Brienne? Yes, Mr. Rollins, you're on mute.
Yep. Brienne, when we brought this subject up, there was talk about a mutual agreement where we would use some of the facilities there at Via Verde. What happened to that part of the agreement?
It will be a separate agreement because that will be a little bit more detailed as far as how we'll make it all work. And looking at those facilities, who will, who will operate them and how? There will have to be improvements made out there for them to be usable by some of our sports groups. So that was going to be a separate agreement.
All right, well, I, I hope that the school board will entertain those. And so we're forfeiting some potential revenue by allowing the, the kids to use the facility swimming in otherwise. And I know in the past, Via Verde was a little out of the way for most of the activities. And so I hope that we can find a way to get something out of this agreement that benefits both, you know, the, the school as well as the rest of the citizens of the community.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Okay. I'd like to have a motion to approve the agreement between the school board of Palm Beach County, Verde K-8 School, and the Greater Boca Raton Beach and Park District, please.
I'll make the motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and a second please.
Aaron, you're on mute. I think you.
All right, I'll second.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Joanne, would you do the roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogelstein?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Good, thank you. Okay. The next item is the George Horton Memorial, and Mr. Rollins will be leading us off on that. It's on page 21 of your agenda packet.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I was contacted by a fellow baseball coach and someone whose children have been through various programs here in the community. And so Kevin Lowney speaks with authority about a valuable member of the baseball community, the youth baseball community, who recently passed away. He was a coach, and you've seen the letters of commendation that are in your packet from various individuals, some of whom I know, but they speak very highly of Kevin and his dedication to the youth of our community. And it's in that spirit that I'd like to make a motion that we honor a request to place a plaque at one of our ball fields here in Sugar Sand Park in memory of Mr. George Allen Horton. I think you saw the plaque that was proposed by the sponsors of this initiative. And if you read the, the words on there, you can tell that this gentleman was well-deserving of recognition for his many years of service to the youth in our community. And with that in mind, I do make a motion that we honor this request for a plaque honoring Mr. Horton at one of the baseball fields at Sugar Sand Park.
Do I hear a second? You're on mute, Steve.
Second.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any discussion? I think that it's entirely appropriate, and I concur with all of Mr. Rollins's comments. And I think we need a roll call vote, Joanne.
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogelstein?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Joanne. Okay, we're going to open up the Ocean Breeze Boca Tica RFI discussion. I have, I usually defer to our, my colleagues. Sam, would you mute for me? That'd be great. But tonight, if I may, I'm going to lead off with some comments. As you know, I have the utmost respect for all of you, our staff and our district council. And although we may not agree on a lot of subjects, I also hold the city council and their staff in high esteem. That being said, both of our elected bodies need to remember to whom we have the greatest responsibility, our residents, our tax-paying residents, who elected all of us and rely on us to do the right thing. Circumstances have dramatically changed the wants and needs of our community, as evidenced by the RFI we're about to discuss in a public forum. Just as our RFI wasn't representative of each and every taxpayer in the city and district, nor did the needs assessment, since it was taken pre-pandemic, in what some responders have said was difficult at best to complete with the process used to come to a conclusion. The district's RFI may not have been scientific, but it was clear about what the taxpayers want. Golf, walking and biking trails, and racket sports like tennis and pickleball, among many other great suggestions. Recently, there was an article by Austin Erblek in the Boca Times and in Sun Sentinel, where he stated the city has approved the construction of an ice rink. He accurately noted that the, an ice rink was not even one of the amenities requested on the needs assessment that has been approved. Saying that there is adequate golf in Boca with one 18-hole course and a nine-hole par-three, par-four does not take into consideration the maintenance of those 18 holes with part of the course being closed periodically to ensure optimum playability. The 22,000 rounds, which I now have learned is more than that, that were lost from Boca Muni's executive course that cannot possibly be absorbed by Red Reef, and the affordable greens fees for those of us who do not live in a gated country club community with golf facilities. Although we have been diligently trying to improve Ocean Breeze and have experienced roadblocks, we have a responsibility to the 124 RFI respondents as well as the 243 individuals who signed a petition asking for golf. Golf would not eliminate walking and biking trails, tennis or pickleball, but it would add something that our community is fervently asking us to build. Yes, I am a golfer, but like you, I voted to build the pickleball courts at Patch Reef and would enthusiastically support walking and biking trails. This is not about what we want or what the members of city council want. It is clear that the community wants and needs a short course, a driving range, and a learning center that would provide a facility for our high schools and our universities. At this time, I'd like to also ask the residents to go to the city council members, much like they did when they came to us when we wanted to raise our millage rate, and make sure that their voices are heard. Thank you. So commissioners, let's open up this discussion. And I'll start with Commissioner Wright. You're on mute, Aaron, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry. I kind of want to listen a little bit first, so if anybody else wants to go first, they can absolutely do that.
Okay. What, who wants to go first? Somebody put your hand up. Okay, Mr. Engel, I knew that would be you.
Madam Chair, I share a lot of the same feelings you do. But while I appreciate all of the people who want golf at Ocean Breeze coming before our commission and making their voices heard, and I do appreciate it. I feel like you're preaching to the choir. It's, city council has made very plain that they have no interest in golf at Ocean Breeze. So it's not us that you need to convince, it's them. And your presence at city council meetings, at workshops, your phone calls, and your emails are important, just like you've called us, emailed us, and been at our meetings. You need to be at city council, and you need to convince them. Because even though we own all of the east side of the golf course exclusively, you know, that's 100% ours, putting a golf course there is still dependent upon city approval. They could tie it up for, for years if that's what they felt like was necessary. So I urge you, please, go to city council. Tell them your side of the story. Keep telling them your side of the story. Telling us, like I said, you're preaching to the choir. We're very familiar with it. I, I think all of us, I don't think any of us have a problem with putting an executive course on the east side of Ocean Breeze. We can't do it unless we do it with city council. And to start another fight over this, I think would be counterproductive. We need, we need them to be on board with this. And you can do more than we can as far as doing that. And a perfect example is the presence of the pickleball people at the last joint meeting. They said their piece, and city council responded. We didn't hear that much from you guys. So again, please, make your voice heard at city council. It's even more important than making your voice heard here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, Madam Chairman, I have to echo your comments and also let Mr. Chaffey know I feel the same way that he does about where we are today. When we undertook the RFI, it was the idea that people were going to voluntarily indicate what they wanted. We didn't have a checklist of things like there was in the needs assessment, but rather individuals indicated their preference for golf, which was the number-one vote-getter on the RFI. Plus, there was quite a number, over 200, I believe, in actual petitions for us to put a executive course on Ocean Breeze. I saw Mr. Hurd's presentation on the executive course being located on the west side of, Steve said, the east side. We don't have to have the city's approval on the east side, Steve. I think you may have meant the west side. We, we can do what we, we need to do since we have the, we own that property rather than the city. I want to remind everybody too, like what was in the previous ILA when we purchased this property, the city's approval should not be unreasonably withheld. Well, I submit to you that I feel that the city's approval is being unreasonably withheld based upon the comments that have been, have been made regarding the limited number of golf that's going to be available for individuals once Boca Municipal closes. Frankly, I think if we were united in asking for a golf course, an executive course, I believe the city council would have to listen to our, our pleas for that. Short of that, I know that if we felt like that the decision was being unreasonably withheld, there are, there is a process for taking that to one step further. I would, and I think none of us wanted to do that in the previous one, and that's the reason why we find ourselves in this particular spot today. Of course, the acquisition or the gift of Boca Country Club has added a new dynamic to this. But I have a client that owns an executive course in West Boca. Business has never been better for this individual. We'll have the same experience if we have a executive golf course on the west side with a driving range and a learning center. And I think that then that gives us a huge palette to develop what amounts to the other requests for, for the walking trails and other passive activities, including more active like maybe tennis and pickleball. I strongly support an executive golf course. I do think that we, if we're united about that, we can make some progress. If, if we don't have a consensus, then the city council, of course, will not, you know, agree to any type of development plan that included an executive golf course.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins. Mr. Engel put his hand back up, so we'd like to hear from him.
Yeah, Commissioner Rollins, I'm aware that we own the east side, but I'm on mute. No, I'm not on mute, okay. But also, there's the issue of permitting and inspection. And we've already seen what's, how far behind we are on Ocean Strand, which is a much smaller and less complex project. And my concern is that the city could tie us up literally for years. You know, look what's going on with the, with the pumping project till we got the necessary permitting for that. I don't think anybody wants to go through that again. I think we need to, just like when the city wanted us not to raise our millage rate, they got a turnout. I think it's up to the, to the members of the golfing community to make an equivalent case for the executive course in front of city council. I think they have the support of, of the commission. I don't think that's an issue. I think what is an issue is that city council was unanimous in their opposition to any kind of golf at Boca Tica, at Ocean Breeze. So I think that's, that's the bear we need to wrestle with.
Mr. Rollins?
Do we have a consensus?
Well, according to Ms. O'Rourke at, on city council, she felt that we were not united. So that's where we are today, that I'd like to find out where everybody wants to be, and then we can go ahead from there with, with the city. So we need to hear from everybody, and then we can debate among ourselves now that we're in a public forum, and we can do that. So, Mr. Ernst, would you like to speak? I think he's speaking to someone.
Sorry, sorry about that. So there was a minor little accident out front of our house, so that's, we're working on that.
Everybody okay?
Yes, but there's a lot of emotions involved in it. So let's kind of go back and revisit where we're at, okay? I appreciate everyone's comments, and everyone is well-intentioned, you know, particularly the folks at Rick, Rick Hurd's done a great job with the video. Greg, I spoke with Greg. Harold, everyone is very well-intentioned. And there is no one who, I think we all fought this battle to build out the Price-Fosse design, because I did believe in that Price-Fosse design as a superb municipal course for going forward. However, you know, things change. And as things change, the, obviously, the city inherited a quote gift of this Boca Country Club, and it's two and a half miles and away, two and a half miles away, so we have to keep that in mind. In the joint meeting, it was clear and unanimous, the city elected did not support a second golf course. So you have to take that into consideration, and it also will hurt the opening of their golf course if you have two competing golf courses. So we have to be realistic about that. And I, you know, to the, the group at Boca Tica, you know, I also have to point out that, you know, Ocean Breeze has been a failed golf course for many years. So we're on the up- So we're on the uptick right now post-COVID, but prior to COVID, you know, it didn't have much contribution from the residents there. There is no assessments that were contributing towards it, and so it failed on its own. It just flat out failed on its own. And so, yes, we're on an uptick in golf right now, but we don't know where this is going to land. What we do know is that pickleball as a need for in Boca, a championship pickleball facility is very important. And I think that is a missed opportunity if we don't do that somewhere. So what I heard at the city meeting was that, let's do an assessment of where the best location is to be at that. That could be at Ocean Breeze, that could be over at the Boca Country Club, or it could be even at Spanish River. I don't know. So I think we, we need to get that information. And far as the RFI goes, I want to kind of point out to you, to everyone, that the RFI was not a vote for the community of things. It was intended to be, give me your best ideas. Let's get ideas out there to develop the next phase of this thing. And the next phase of it is kind of developing a master plan. It's 212 acres, and I don't recall who the person was, but at the joint meeting, they spoke about the great opportunity in front of us of doing something great. And I think that can serve many things. Something great can come out of it, but I think it also has to be multifunctional. So it's not going to be just golf, it's not going to be just pickleball, it's not going to be just tennis. I think there's plenty of room to do something for everyone, including golf. I just don't know what that is. New concepts are still coming about, you know? I understand Tiger Woods is doing something in Delaware that looks very interesting and very similar to what the Fazio design was for the cradle on the east course. I'm not ruling it out, but I think my take on it is similar to Steve Engel. If you say, I'm going to build a golf course on the east side, hell or high water, you're going to run into more difficulties than you ever thought. What I do think is meaningful and worthwhile is to probably start with a master planner to see what things we can incorporate. Do an RFI for a master planner. And if we can come to consensus on a overall design incorporates many things, now we got something to go to the city council with in August. And I think there's where you can kind of say, look at this plan of the whole thing. We really do need to be unanimous. And, and that's, that's clear that we weren't and, and they were. And so they do feel that golf has been met, but you know, after listening to others, I think it's not quite done yet. It's, it isn't meeting everything. It's kind of subpar. The question is, how can we clarify that for all of us? So that said, I think it's going to be expensive. I think it's important to have partners in this thing and it's important to share expenses on the thing. And that's why I was looking for, you know, the city to be a participant. And our bylaws tell us very clearly that they are the, are primary employees and staff. So it's best to have them on board than not have them on board. So from my perspective, I don't think if we call things to a vote tonight and say we're doing golf on the east side is going to help anything, I will tell you I will vote no. I think the next thing that we should really do is take the next step of getting a master planner, give them these ideas and see what they can kind of come back with. See if we can get something that we can all unanimously get on board with. And that's my thoughts on it.
Thank you, Mr. Ernst. Commissioner Wright?
Okay, I've listened. I am much more so on the page of Craig than anybody else. I think definitely a master planner architect is where we need to go from here. I wanted to thank everybody for the RFI responses. I saw a lot of interesting things in there. One especially was a Central Park type, park type thing in one of the areas. I am looking at Rick Hurd's right now and I appreciate all the hard work you put into it. Golf on the east side, my concern there is for pickleball, if we do, if we are able to figure out a public-private partnership for pickleball, that might be in jeopardy in being on the west side because of, it could jeopardize the bonds from, from what I was told. So pickleball on the west side might not even be an option in terms of putting that there. So pickleball might have to be on the west side and we, or the east side, and we still don't even know in terms of, you know, leasing, we can't lease our property, so how would we even arrange that type thing? So there's still a lot of big question marks in terms of pickleball here. I would like to see the outcome of the city's, you know, determination on where pickleball best fits and then go from there. The other thing I did notice too, yeah.
I just want to address the concern about the bonds. I think we should do the right thing. Don't worry about public-private partnership, don't worry about how we do it, we have to figure out the plan first.
Right, but we also have to pay for it.
I understand, but that's a secondary thing. Well, don't worry.
Okay, well, that just came up.
That's fine, that's fine.
So it was something I wanted to voice. The other thing, I didn't see a maintenance facility on the one plan for the east side and I was a bit concerned on where that would go and it would, it would make that short course even smaller. Now, if that made it even smaller, what's the point in building that short course if we have Red Reef on the ocean that hopefully we could put some money into that and make that even better? So that was my other thought. And the other thing also was when we, when we designed the Price Fazio golf course, it was an 18-hole course with the driving range and the putting, the putting course and the learning center and the short course all together in this one.
Lost her, no?
I think Erin froze.
Erin did freeze. Want to text her, Brianna, and tell her she's been frozen?
Yes.
Oh, she's moving again.
Oh, you're back.
Am I here?
Yeah, you're back.
Oh, sorry. So in terms of the, the cost and maintenance of the executive course and the driving range versus the return that we're going to get, is that going to change without having the 18-hole course on the west side? We don't know. We don't know if we're going to be losing money on this without an 18-hole course on the other side. So that was my other concern. But in terms of like, what we do know that we, we are going to have there is definitely some, some trails, bike trails, walking trails, some nice green space. So we definitely know we want that. So, um, yeah, that's kind of where I'm at. It's, I'm kind of leaning towards, and I like Craig's kind of idea in having something different if we're going to do golf there versus a straight executive course. And if, if the, if they say, yes, you can do golf on the west side, doesn't that mean we have to redesign and get Price Fazio to do a whole new design of golf on the west side? Because it's totally different than what was originally designed. That was my other concern. So we'd have to pay additional funds for that. So I, I'm kind of on the, on the idea that we need to get a master planner architect in here to help us see what we can do here and what really makes sense for the entire community and not just one section. It has to be for everybody.
Well, I appreciate what you're saying and my concern, I called the, one of the gentlemen who's involved with the Naples Pickleball and we started emailing different information and that pickleball center, eight years, was built eight years ago. It costs $30 million and there are 64 courts over there. It's a lovely facility. It's got a small pro shop restroom building. It does not have a large indoor or tennis pickleball facility at all. They charge $5 per session or $50 a year. And it's a very popular facility. My concern about getting into a public-private partnership is what happens down the road if during the middle of the construction, the amount, amount of money that they are considering isn't enough? Yeah, where are they going to go? Are they going to come to us? Are they going to come to the city and say, you know, we're out of money and we're in the middle of all this and we can't complete it? I'm sure that our attorneys can have an ironclad agreement, but I just would hate to see it happen, you know, to the community and to the Boca Tica community. I don't want to get in the middle of something and have it not be successful. As far as the golf, I disagree that it's not needed. It is needed. I know it's because I'm a golfer and nobody on city council is an avid golfer, but you know, I'm just listening to Mr. Hurd and Mr. Galan's numbers. And also, something that hasn't been brought up is Del Rey is closing its main course to redo its main course next year. So there's a whole nother facility that isn't going to be available. And that's a very popular facility as well as Osprey, South Winds, and the other public courses. So just wanted to throw that out there. We do need to be on the same page before we take anything back to city council, because if we're not, they're not going to listen to us. Mr. Rollins? You're on mute.
Madam Chair, I have to step outside for a second.
Okay.
Shall we wait to have Ms. Ernst come back in to reconvene the Madam Chairman or do you want to continue?
We can continue.
Okay. I just like to make the comment that I do agree that we need an executive golf course. Red Reef is a beautiful facility. It's a pitch and putt. It is not an executive golf course. And those of us who are golfers know the difference between an executive course and a pitch and putt course like Red Reef Golf Course is. I'm not doing this for Boca Tica, I'm doing this for the entire golfing community in our, in our city. It's not something, certainly would be an improvement to that, that location. But we've been at this long and hard and the community has long since expressed a need for golfing facilities, most of which are, some of it will be absorbed by the Boca Country Club. But for the reasons that Mr. Galan has pointed out, that's going to be a challenge over Boca Country Club. That's going to require a lot of capital to bring that course back up since it's not in the prime position or condition that it used to be. I, I wanted to do a master planner at the very beginning. Now that we have some ideas and I think now's the time to do it. But we have to get this thing moving because our constituents are frustrated with us, they're frustrated with city council. I'm frustrated with city council because I feel like their opinion about not allowing us to go forward with the golf course was, I'm going to say somewhat selfish, because there was no really good valid reason that they gave. And I feel like their decision to do that is being unreasonably withheld. And I think that if we challenge that, I think we would win. I'm not interested in doing that and I'm interested in certainly, as Steve said, having the golfing community chime in. I don't know why we're so much more accessible than the city council is, but if they're listening in, don't be afraid. Let your voice be heard. You did to us many times. And I encourage you to do that again with the city council. I think if we got a master plan pulled together and, and golf was one of the facilities in there and we were behind this, this facility and all the other amenities in there, I don't, I think we have walking trails aplenty, but I'm willing to concede that we can have those in that area, not because it's close to my neighborhood, but because I think it might be a valuable asset. I think part of our walking trail issue is that they're not very well marked and people don't know where they are, as I never see, the ones I see being used are Spanish River and walking around the lake. And I think this would be a safer alternative than walking down Second Avenue, of course, be able to get off that road. But I, I think we just need to, you know, stand straight, stand tall, get this golf course designed, get a master plan to put the other features in there and, and let's have the community who want this to go to city council and express their desire to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins. Commissioner Wright, as far as the possibility that this course may not support itself with the lighted driving range and the, the executive course, we could direct staff to talk to the National Golf Foundation and get their opinion and see what they would have to say. They, I'm, I'm sure that we've given them enough support financially that they would be able to give us some information and satisfy your, your curiosity about that. The other things, I mean, I don't know that pickleball is going to support itself. Certainly, our soccer fields don't support themselves, but we certainly aren't going to take those away from all the kids or the baseball fields. We want to provide recreation for our community. And I agree that let's get a master plan going and see where things need to be. Let's wait for Mr. Ernst to come back. If anybody, let's take a five-minute recess until he gets back. Madam Chair, I'll call him to see if he's making it back soon. Welcome back. Okay, Commissioner Wright, are you back? Let me find out where she is.
It could have been worse. I was expecting it to be a lot worse out there. There's nothing, Mr. Rollins, front of his car looked pretty serious. This is just a minor funderbender. And, and he wasn't even rattled when he came into the, the meeting. It was, he just said a little car trouble, that's all.
So to fill you in, Mr. Ernst, Mr. Rollins concurred that we do need a master plan and we, and we need to continue to encourage the public to go to the city council and after we get the results of our master plan. Would you like to, there you are, okay. Moved on my screen here. Do you have any other input that you'd like to share?
Mr. Rollins or me?
Mr. Ernst.
I just, I want to be open-minded about it and I want to let the, I understand the desire for a golf component in there, but let's see what the master planner can, can do on this. And, you know, hopefully there's something that we can all get behind and that we can support and, but let's be open-minded and not put any constraints on that master planner. And recognize we also have some feedback coming back from the city eventually. Thank you also for the information about the Naples Pickleball Facility. I think the one thing that we need to also keep in mind, no matter what we build or whatever goes on out there, is going to be expensive. You know, we thought the golf course when we were designing Price Fazio was, you know, it was $20 million and we skinnied it back to, you know, hopefully 15. But as we've seen with pumps and piping and everything else, it prices are higher now. So I just don't know where we're going to land and it's certainly better to have a partner and sharing some of the expenses one way or another. So.
Yes, Mr. Rollins, you're on mute.
Thank you. Just one comment. We've, we've been approached before by members of the community about turning our recreation facilities into money-making facilities by bringing in professional baseball teams. But, and we looked at bringing in a public-private partnership with Rafael Nadal. And we looked at bringing in a public-private partnership with Rafael Nadal. I'm all in favor of expanding our recreational needs. I'm all in favor of enhancing what we already have with pickleball. But I'm not fired up about bringing in a national center much like Naples. I mean, that facility's been there for some time. And I think if we build a center for pickleball, I want it to be for our community. Unless there's someone that can show me the extraordinary profit potential of us building a facility. The issue that I have with putting something that's drawing a lot of users in Ocean Breeze would be the traffic and where we would put that, so that it would be appropriate, which a master planner can tell us. But I promise you that I'll support enhancing our facilities. But I'm more interested in making them available for our community, not for the worldwide.
That's a fair point. I agree with it.
Very good point. And I felt like they came after us with pitchforks when we wanted to do the facility or we were approached to do the facility at Patch Reef Park. It was not well received. But maybe this, you know, maybe another type of facility that would be not be specifically for one professional athlete, shall we say? That it would be for the community. It wouldn't just be for the benefit of one professional athlete. Yes, Mr. Engel?
Yeah. Seems like everybody comes after us with pitchforks.
That's true.
Yeah. I mean, look, we're easy targets. We're very accessible. We pride ourselves on listening to the public and giving voice to their voices. And so we have to bear with the pitchforks. You know, it's easier to deal with us, apparently, than to deal with city council. So they come to us, they make their case. But, you know, time comes when you need to go to city council and make the case and use their... And I hate to use the metaphor, but use your pitchforks against them. I hold no animosity toward them. And I understand why they're doing what they're doing. But it's because they don't feel there's much opposition in the community. So the community has to make its voice heard. I'm amenable. A matter of fact, I welcome the idea of having a master planner come in on an RFI basis to tell us something about the whys and wherefores, about what we should be doing and what we can do with the property. You know, I like the idea of golf. It's been established that there really isn't a capacity at the existing executive courses. I can play devil's advocate and say that some of the increase at golf courses over the last year is due to the desire to get out and play, you know, something that's... Do something that's acceptable. Golf is one of those things. We'll know this year, if the demand keeps up. We'll know in a few months whether that's a permanent thing or a phenomenon. Pickleball is showing durability and showing staying power. That's another thing we have to consider. As usual, the Beach and Park District is caught between a hammer and a hard place in trying to do the right thing for the community. And, well, look, people will keep coming at us with pitchforks. There's nothing we can do about it.
Mr. Rollins?
I thought Steve was going to make a motion there for a moment.
Oh, me?
And I was prepared to second his motion that we look for a... Put out an RFI for a master planner to help us pull us together, because I think we've talked about this enough where we're at the point where we need to do just that. And Craig, if you would mind seconding Steve's motion?
Well, I need to just correct everybody on something that Brienne has brought up. She said if a motion is made, we need an RFP for an architect slash engineer to master plan and design the park, not an RFI. So if you would make...
That sounds like a good motion.
But I can't make it.
I will make the motion that we hire an architect/engineer to make a... Issue an RFP for an architect/engineer to master plan the old Ocean Breeze Golf Course for us, so that we can come back and have something that we can get our teeth into.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rollins. Should we include a timeframe, Commissioners?
ASAP.
Well, I'm talking about for them to get, you know, get the... When we would expect an answer. Brienne, would you...
Let's... We'll write the RFP, bring it back to you at the next meeting. And then we can get it out to the street once everybody's comfortable with it.
Yes. Our next meeting is on May 17. And the, you know, let's get this rolling so that we can help our community and help our residents. It's not... And it's not just the Boca Tika community. It's the entire community. I think that, you know, all the amenities that we're looking at are going to just make it a wonderful park and facility. So with that, any more comments or questions before we vote on this motion? Yes, Commissioner Wright, you're on mute.
Are we going to be able to provide them with, like, the needs assessment and the RFI responses and any background information that they need and stuff like that?
It's all public information. So yes, absolutely.
Well, yeah. But I mean, I think it's important to provide it for the RFP, so they have the information at hand.
Absolutely.
The RFP will give us proposers. And when you select somebody, we would provide them all that information so that they could start designing.
Okay. Can we request, like... I mean, obviously, they'll hopefully do more than one. But do we have to be specific and say X number of options in terms of what is...
That will be... That's after you hire the firm. You'll give them the... What exactly you want them to come back with as far as the design plan? Like, the first step is to get firms to submit basically their resumes to you to show you. And then you select the firm that you want from this RFP. And then we would write up a contract, negotiate something with them that would define all those terms as far as options and things like that that you'd want to see.
And keep in mind that we're going to have to do this in phases.
Right. Well, they will come up with a master plan. It says here, we've given them many components. And I think, Erin, there's an opportunity for not just us as elected to meet with them and give them our viewpoint, as possibly the city council had welcomed them to give it, and a community part of it. But at the end of the day, let them come back with these different components we've come up with and see if we can get a, you know... Where... How does it... Could it all fit together or not? You know, or are we kind of, you know, stuck? You know, I don't think we're ever stuck, because we have 212 acres. And it can be nice. You know, we know we like walking trails. We know we like... There's going to be some level of trails, no matter what, throughout the area. And El Rio is right there. There's a lot of opportunity there. So I guess don't worry about that level of details. We will... We're... The first step is find that architect/engineering firm. And then we'll... It's not going to be easy, though. The decision is still this body with a lot of input from the city.
Thank you, Craig. Brienne, go ahead and vote on this, and then we'll reopen public requests. Okay. Joanne, would you do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay. We are going to reopen public requests. Melissa, you said someone had their hand up?
Mr. Diller Brandstedt?
Hi. Bruce Diller Sandig, 140 Southeast Fifth Avenue, Boca Raton, Florida, 33432. So first, I got a comment about hiring an architect. I built the house from scratch. And when I hired an architect, he said to me, "How many bedrooms do you want? How large do you want your living room? Do you want to have an open space?" Your architect is only going to build what you tell them. So I think you first have to figure out what you really want. The second thing I'm going to say is, before you hire an architect, I think the economics of an executive golf course has to be put down dependent to numbers. It costs X dollars to build it. It costs X dollars to maintain it. It costs staff. And based upon everything that you know, can you afford the shortfall? And I think that's kind of very important. I'm a businessman. You have to know the economics. You know, it's kind of like, I can sell a product for $10. But if that product cost me $20, you know what? I'm not going to make it up on volume. So I, you know... I don't have a problem with putting an executive course. I do have a problem about putting a sinkhole in where you have to go, "Can this be supported?" And you know what? In all fairness to Mr. Jassy, his organization should really be called Keep Golf in Boca Tika. And you know what? This, to me, Ocean Breeze should be Central Park. You should have a boat pond. You can put a concession there and make some money there. A boat pond, meaning model boats. People come there to congregate. A walking trail. I mean, this is... You have the opportunity to build 212 acres of magnificence. You can build different types of huts, Wi-Fi areas. I mean, everything there. A golf course? I don't have a problem with that. But you have to look at the economics. It's going to cost X dollars to build it. And what is it going to cost to maintain? What are the projections? And can you afford it? You know, I'm going to say this. Had you not given... And I don't want to get into pumps and whatever it is. But that's really what I have to say in terms of Ocean Breeze. And you have to do the economics before you hire an architect. An architect is only going to tell... Is only going to build what you tell them. It's like a consultant. You know what a consultant is? A consultant is a person that looks at your watch and tells you what time it is. So I kind of think you kind of have to go, "This is what the economics are. This is our wish list. This is our second wish list." And then hire an architect. I think putting a proposal together is a smart move now. This way, you're all ready. But I think you should spend some more time putting together a wish list. And before you do that, I'm really going to suggest that somebody put a pen to paper and do the economics. Thank you so much.
Good suggestion, Mr. Diller Sandig. Thank you. Are there any other hands up, Melissa?
Yes. Phone number ending in 3460.
Hi again, everybody. It's Rick Hurd, 285 Northeast Spanish Court. Thank you very much. I just took some notes along the way as everyone was talking. So I'm going to address the comments in... Just in the order that they came up. One of them was for Commissioner Ernst on the reasons that Ocean Breeze failed. You said that it failed on its own. The reality is, it failed because of a failed attempt to develop the golf course. The owners of the golf course paid way too much money for it. And they were then unable to develop the golf course. They were going to develop the South Nine with condominiums and townhomes. The crash of 2007 happened. The development didn't happen as a result. And they were unable to pay, I think it was a $5 million balloon. And so it went into receivership. And it failed, not because people didn't play. The course was extremely busy. But it failed because the bank milked the golf course of everything and failed to maintain it. So ultimately, it went under because of the bank. Another comment was to put more money into Red Reef to make it better. The city actually redesigned Red Reef in around 2000, 2001, making it much, much better than it used to be. And it is a beautiful place. It is constrained. There's no amount of money that we can put into Red Reef.
We lost you, Rick.
No, I think he's on mute.
There he is.
Somebody muted me. I don't know why. No amount of money can make Red Reef a longer golf course. It's a beautiful place. It is what it is. When we call it a pitch and putt course, that's not to denigrate it. It's a beautiful, short golf course. But it'll always be a short golf course. And it's not the kind of golf course that the executive golfers play. The next comment is basically what is the double standard of golf. It's a double standard that if we build a golf course, it somehow has to be some profit-making entity compared to every other park feature. Sugar Sand Park does not make money. Patch Reef Park does not make money. I challenge you to find any park, any city park, recreation amenity, that actually makes money. And I'm not saying that that's a good thing or a bad thing. I'm just saying that you can't hold golf up to that same standard and criticize it, because it costs money to build a golf course. It costs money to build walking trails. It costs money to build basketball courts and tennis courts and community centers and everything else. Yes, we have to be sure that if we're going to build a golf course, it's going to be busy enough to pay its own freight, which I believe it will. I think those analyses have been done by National Golf Foundation, and I would welcome them to do it again. For those interested in the idea of maybe outsourcing and pickleball, you should take a look at what happened at Pictona. That's in Holly Hill. And it was actually financed by philanthropists, who, in a partnership with the city, built a fabulous pickleball center. And it's to call it a pickleball center is a misnomer, because it's a community center. It's a senior center. It has bocce. It has cornhole. It has everything. Shuffleboard. It has inside activities. It has outside activities. It's an amazing place. And that same sort of public-private partnership could probably happen here if we find a way to do it. And lastly, I'll say, while we've all been sort of, you know, twiddling our thumbs and not getting things done here at Ocean Breeze, in one year, at West Palm Beach Golf Club, another private-public partnership happened. And the West Palm Beach Golf Course is now being developed. In one year, they raised over $40 million. They are going to build basically what we had intended to build with the Boca National. They're going to spend more money than we were going to spend. They're going to have an 18-hole golf course, a nine-hole executive course. They're moving the home of the South Florida PGA on site. They're going to have youth programs and on and on. It's going to be a fantastic place. And they brought in Gil Hans, who's arguably one of the top, most recognized golf course architects in the world right now. He did the Rio... In Brazil, the Olympic course. And he's done numerous other courses. He's a fantastic designer. And this has all happened while we're just sitting around not getting anything done. It's very frustrating for all the golfers to see this happen. And Boca's fallen behind. And those are all my comments. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Rick, as always. We appreciate it. Melissa?
Mr. Galanis.
Yeah, hi, guys. Do I need to repeat my address again?
No, you're fine. We have it on record.
You guys should have it memorized by now.
We do. We absolutely do.
So you know, I think, a lot of all of you, and you know the golfers have been in the boat with you guys elbow-to-elbow for over three years. We are not going anywhere. My good friend Rick Hurd is on top of his game, as always. And he's passionate about this, like golfers are about the game that we love that is growing immensely. So some random thoughts and notes that I've taken during the meeting. Somebody needs to follow through on the item mentioned, following up with the National Golf Foundation, because I think you'll be pleasantly surprised from what you hear and what's changed since we commissioned the study several years back. Of all the ideas that came through on the RFI, golf was the only one with significant offsetting revenues against the expenses to develop and operating costs. And again, National Golf Foundation can validate...
Foundation can validate that and give you guys confidence and courage to support the decision that needs to be made here. The other overarching concern, I run into Craig walking the dog many times during the week. We have lengthy conversations. I talk to you guys very, very often. And I am confident the city has a lot of misinformation. They are not golfers. They do not understand the issues. When they talk about one facility competing with the other, it just, it validates this level of ignorance. I am putting in a meeting request to the city manager, Leifonel, tonight. And Susie, I invite you to join me, to sit down with him, to understand their reservations and potentially support our wishes and see if there's some middle ground there. I have no doubt that we need the city on board to get this done, but unless this elected body is unanimous and in agreement with what needs to be done, they are going to run like hell. They are not going to support anything. The last comment, many of you guys come to me very often and say, you guys need to go to the city. Why aren't you talking to the city? The city has 100 things on their plate and golf is not one of them. You guys have recreation on your plate and golf is one of those cornerstones. I will be relentless with the mayor and the city council and we will stay on top of them, but more than anything, we need you guys to be unanimous and in support because if you're not, our time is wasted. Thank you again for all you do and let's make golf happen in Boca, please.
Thank you, Greg. Is there anybody else?
No other hands are raised.
Commissioners, would you have any objection for, if I were to sit in on that meeting with Mr. Galanis and Mr. Arnell?
I would not, Madam Chair.
I do not either.
Okay. I would love to do that. Okay. Yes, Mr. Goran.
If you do attend, good evening, everyone. If you do attend the meeting today, you're appearing as the, the chair of the Boca Park District, of course, but you have no delegated authority to make decisions or to indicate any more theoretically than what's been discussed on the public record. And you do not bear the votes of your colleagues because it's not a public meeting on this, maybe a private session of some sort, and you appear in capacity with some limitations. Not, there's no legal bar to you doing so, just as long as Mr. Arnell realizes and the city attorney that you're there in your capacity as the chair, but not being delegated to make decisions or to engage in negotiation with the city. That's not the reason for the meeting.
I totally understand. Thank you, Mr. Goran.
To protect you in the context of that conversation.
Absolutely. All righty. We are up to our reports and discussion items with the Executive Director Harms.
Commissioners, just a few things on my list tonight. The work at Boca Tica has begun focusing on the front entrance. So many of the residents over there have seen that get started. They're working on irrigation. They've cleared out the weeds off the, the front entrance area. Pressure cleaning was complete and they're continuing with work this week. Hopefully the tank removal by the maintenance area will be out of there by the end of this week. Additionally, the pump in the tunnel was repaired and is operational again. It's been reconnected to the power and it's ready to go. So when it rains, we shouldn't have any more standing water issues, which is a great thing. Deck resurfacing at Swim and Racket Center will hopefully start next week as well. Future agenda items that I have are the FPL car charging stations, the pickleball tournament presentation, if, if the board is agreeable to that. Of course, we'll have the RFP for the master plan services as well and Ocean Strand update, if I didn't say that one. And then just quickly, I'd like to switch gears just to acknowledge a couple of losses that our recreation community has had over the past week. I want to send out our condolences to the family and friends of Sean Stevens, who worked as the educator at the Children's Science Exploring at Sugar Sand Park for the past three years. Sean brought enthusiasm, knowledge and heart to his role, teaching physical science and expanding the Exploring's presence in our community. And our hearts are with Sean's family, friends and coworkers as they move through the days ahead. And additionally, I want to express our condolences and my personal thoughts and condolences to the family, friends and coworkers of Michelle Zimmer, who most recently served in her career as the Deputy Director of Recreation Services for the City of Boca. Michelle devoted her career to advocating for recreation and mentored many other recreational professionals throughout her years as a public servant. She came to the city with enthusiasm, a very intense passion for what she did, and that was always going to leave a mark on our facilities and staff. Michelle was a force in recreation and she brought that same drive and determination into everything she did. And I ask that we all keep Michelle's family, friends and coworkers in our thoughts as they learn to navigate the days ahead without her smile, wit and never-ending positivity. And that is all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Michelle will be missed, as will Sean. Thank you very much, Brianne, for those lovely words. Our district council, Mr. Goran?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The Governor today signed two executive orders, literally the past couple of hours, Executive Order 21-101 followed by 102. We are just now beginning to review them and we'll give you a full briefing on them. But essentially what the Governor has done is that the original Executive Order 20-52, which declared the statewide emergency, will be basically repealed by virtue of 101 and 102, effective on July 1 of this year. The end result of which is that by the Governor's findings in both orders that he signed, which we just received again within the past couple of hours, if you have to even delete that, adjust them, issues such as regulations, rules, policies, local governments and public buildings will be significantly affected and quite frankly, we're reading thus far preempted by the Governor's Executive Order and that local governments that would seek to adopt ordinances, rules, policies or such like that would be preempted by the Governor's constitutionally vested Executive Order power. And by virtue of allowing 20-52 to expire, which is one of the premises on which this district board has been meeting with a virtual quorum, virtual meeting, would theoretically expire also and in fact expire theoretically further by July 1. We will study those orders. We will get back to you by separate email the next day or so. I know that a lot of government practitioners are studying these orders this evening. They were, they were actually issued in rapid succession within a minute, minutes. So the end result is they're there. They, they reflect on the fact that the other executive order, which was the, which, which 2052 was extended, in my better, just one day, you'll forgive me, 2021-94 extended 2052, the end result of which is that we are in that Netherlands, so to speak. We'll address the issue with you before the next regular meeting, but come July the 1st, the Governor has decided the pandemic over.
Thank you, Mr. Goran. Do you have anything else?
Just to you that we will to assist in any preparations, the RP, related to our staff, certainly to assist the mayor and committee of the mayor regarding the issues that related to your conversations, see all of your policy driven. And to the extent that we can answer questions or legal issues arise from those policy discussions, we're happy to respond in writing in person or anything in between. And we always give the privilege of being your general counsel. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Goran. Commissioners, we'll start with Mr. Engel.
Thank you. A couple of things. One of the things I noticed at the joint meeting in the ILA that covered Red Reef, the stipulation for who is allowed to use the property at, at a discounted rate was for residents of the district. I bring this up because the residents of the former polo club, while in the city, are not a part of the district. And I think that this is something that we need to address. I, my feeling is that the longer we allow this to sit, the more open we are to litigation by district residents who might not feel that, that they are, that they need to subsidize the residents of the polo club for use of that facility. I don't know, to be honest, whether this applies in our ILAs covering other properties. But this is, or whatever, in the properties that we own, such as Sugar Sand or lease such as Patch Reef, I don't know if it's applicable there, but Red Reef definitely needs to be addressed. Another question I had was with regard to Ocean Strand. It seems to have been gotten lost in the, in the to-do about Ocean Breeze and the joint meeting that we've had, that we had with, with the city and Gumbo Limbo. So if the Executive Director could let us know where we are?
Yeah, that was one of the items I wanted to have as an agenda topic for the next meeting. We are just working on the archaeological report, finalizing that. And then we'll come back next week to just talk about what, what that report reveals or the next meeting, what that report says and, and what we can do moving forward with the park.
Okay, thank you. One other thing, just a comment on Mr. Verstandig's comment. I think what was missing in our RFP when we did, when we put it out for, originally for Ocean Breeze, was a dollar cap on the project. And I think this time, I think he's correct. I think we need to put some kind of dollar amount as what we're prepared to spend on development of the course. And it's got to be a realistic figure. If it's $10 million or $5 million or whatever it is, we need to, we need to establish that as part of the RFP. And that's all I got, aside from pitchforks.
There we go. Mr. Ernst, would you like to go next?
Yeah, a couple of things. Actually, touching base on what Steve mentioned there, the polo club, I guess the question kind of bounces back to Sam. If, if there is a, is there really a liability there or not? So that's kind of a legal question related to the, the structure. And then a simple way to solve that, I think, is just amendment to our, our bounding principles that we mirror the, whatever the city boundary is, because I do think it's going to come up again. And it's, you could it potentially, if the city annexes the Boca Country Club area, it, you know, it's a lost revenue source for us and it's going to come up again and again. So it's an open question of how to solve that. I don't know if now's the time to solve that or later, but the first question is, is there a liability related to what Steve described? Number two, is there a simple fix to do that just to mirror any growth in the city in our bylaws going forward instead of all the details that are in there? So that, that would be a question or an aspect that I think would be worthwhile to explore. And then next on Ocean Strand, look forward to hearing what, what's going on with Ocean Strand and move it forward. It certainly morphed into something much bigger than we thought. Lastly, I wanted to approach this board with, about a year ago, it was Steve who mentioned the need for a foundation for the Beach and Park District. But his proposal for the Beach and Park District was really for the district to be the staff and running it and funding it. And so we don't have to answer the question now and maybe we put it on a future agenda item, Madam Chair, but I'd like to propose that I independently run that foundation or create the foundation independent of this board and with the city's blessing with a very narrow scope that it is, the purpose of the foundation is to raise funds for green space going forward. And, you know, I'll work with the structure that Steve laid out, but it'd be totally independent of this board with the primary beneficiary being directed by the city and the district of what acquisition of green space. I just throw that out there so you can think about it and maybe later we'll, we'll come back to it. I think Steve's got a question.
Yeah, I, I explored doing that once the commission made its wishes clear. And there's a gray area in Sunshine Law which talks about what our responsibilities are, for lack of a better phrase, with regard to being involved in an independent entity and raising money for a Beach and Park District-related activity. So for that reason, we can't be members of the Board of Friends of Gumbo Limbo. So I, before we went ahead, I would sit down with our council to make sure there are no landmines here. I erred on the, on the side of safety in reading the Sunshine Laws and the Code of Ethics. I decided against pursuing it, but you may be made of sterner stuff than I. So, but I would suggest talking to our council before proceeding.
Okay. So you don't mind if I pursue it another step?
Not at all. Not at all.
Okay, I'll look into it. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Ernst?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Wright?
Yeah, did we need to have a clear directive for Brianne to look into the feasibility of the executive course for either the West Side or the East Side for the National Golf Foundation? Did we, did we do that or do we need to do that or?
I was going to reach out to them. I mean, I got the.
Okay, just to see what they say. Okay. That was it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rollins?
Thank you, ma'am. I think I said my piece, but we definitely need to stay on track and get this vision pulled together, get consensus and move on, as so eloquently said by Mr. Hurd.
Thank you. I have nothing today and I thank you all for all of your participation and all your, your great ideas. And I want to thank the public for all the great input because it's, it's very constructive. And I think we can go forward with this master plan and do something really great for the community. That being said, Brianne has noted all the future agenda items that we will have at our next meeting. So Mr. Engel?
I move to adjourn.
Do I hear a second? Mr. Rollins? Okay. Joanne, would you do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Ernst?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Volosang?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. Stay safe and we'll see you in two weeks. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Night.
Night.